Good afternoon. I'm going to start with some coordinates. North, 28 degrees, .85476. That's the location of the dam that I have tried to get somebody to meet me on-site to discuss. That is the area where 36 inches of water is being held back and not being allowed to leave the city. I sent a picture of the water level in the back of my house to the mayor, if anyone cares. The pictures that I printed off last time, the mayor said he never saw them, they were never given. I don't think Phyllis or anybody else was giving them, so I wasn't going to print more pictures for nobody to look at. If you would like to see what the water level is, the mayor has those pictures. The water's higher than pre-EAN. The dam is not a weir. A weir has an opening at the bottom to slowly allow the water to leave. This is a dam, there's no opening, and it's holding 36 inches of water through the entire city. My suggestion: knock out the dam, pay the fine if it's $10,000 a day for nine days. Okay, that's still less than what it's costing me to fix my house that I'm still not finished with. St. John's Water Management District, when I spoke to them, said Deltona just has to ask, they're open to suggestions, but Deltona has to ask them. This isn't what you guys are going to want to hear, but honestly, I think that you are a contributing factor to the flooding of Stone Island by not having a holding capacity within the city. You need to have a holding capacity within the city. The water needs to be gone from the city when the river is at a low level where it can accept it, and that's a conversation that you guys have to have with St. John's Water Management because they're in control with that. But if the city can hold X many billions of gallons, it's that much less going into the backside of Stone Island before they're going to flood. That dam should have an opening, slowly allowing the water to drain into St. John's. It does not, it's still at catastrophic flood level, spilling over the top, and I gave you the coordinates. You guys destroyed my house, you gave me nothing to fix it, no material, no money to be used for materials, nothing, and now I find out that you want to charge me $186 or whatever to do a study and ultimately flood my house again. This is insane. It would be like half my second graders failing and the principal coming into my classroom and saying, "We're going to do a 12-week study on why the class is failing." That's not solving the problem. I had 21 second graders last year. I'm not supposed to have more than 18, but yet you guys keep building apartments, and we're worried about Starbucks and Chick-fil-A and Publix and Amazon, and I love Chick-fil-A and all that other stuff, too, but I think we need to deal with this water situation in the city before anything else is done. Thank you for hearing me.
Robert Trumbetta, please.
Robert Trumbetta, 439 Golden Arm Road, Deltona. I'd like to respond to the attack on Commissioner Vasquez by Richard and actually started by Nick, questioning her family's pain of taxes. What I found ironic was that when he talked about it, Commissioner Burbank, Commissioner Vasquez, Anita, Dana, Jody, and Steve, they all pay property taxes. The only one that really doesn't pay property taxes is the mayor. He insinuated, which is fine, I mean, that's fine. Problem is that they insinuated that if you don't pay property taxes, then really you don't have a right to vote on tax increases or decreases or anything like that. And that's really not the American way. I mean, we don't put tests on people's ability to vote once they're elected. We don't say they have to owe property, they don't, we don't say that. I hear some people say that, I've heard somebody say, "Not here," that only people with children should be able to vote. Well, that's not America. To question a veteran and their disability, I find pretty distasteful. I didn't serve in Vietnam, I could have, I was in college at the time. I would never, ever, ever question anybody's service or the benefits they get either through the VA or through this tax benefit. To do that is pretty distasteful, and to be honest with you, I don't question, obviously, the commissioner or anybody's patriotism. I do question the patriotism of the people who try to slander a commissioner by using her husband's service and his disability. So that's one thing. The second thing I want to talk about is consistently, one of our, the ex-commissioner comes up here. We all know it is, the ex-commissioner of the 6th district, that's my district, and guess what? He comes here and talks about what you guys should be doing and what should have been done and all the different things, and comes and attacks people on the dais, and yet, he's a quitter. He only served two years of a four-year, four-year term, it's a sentence, actually, but four-year term, and lost, and now is using this podium as his means of politicking, pointing his finger. He didn't do jack for two years he was in office, not one thing in my district. Can I point my finger to and say, "That belongs to that person"? So David can come up here and pontificates and campaign from this podium all he wants, but the freebies are over. No longer we're going to allow him, just I personally, myself, are going to allow him to go unanswered because he was a do-nothing commissioner who quit after two years.
Mr. Trumbetta, let's, again, I just said before, if you have a grievance, say it. Obviously, you do have a grievance, but let's, let's keep the personal attacks down.
Albert Bryant, please.
Good evening. Albert Bryant, Deltona. You know, on the meeting tonight, it shows that y'all have quarterly reports. And looking at those quarterly reports, what caught my attention was the word advisory Two reasons for that. One, because in Deltona, when have we ever actually listened to any of the advisory boards? Two is the fact that, how much do they actually advise? But looking even closer at the Fire Union Pension Report, I noticed the actual report for 2022 is not even attached to this report. Once again, zero information regarding the percentage of funded or underfunded of the plan. It's done by, and I quote, Mr. Vaccaro described them as "a third-party independent company." And it indicates, again, a growing amount that is underfunded or unfunded. For almost 15 years now, the city has a growing underfunded liability. The last administration was the only one, in any time that I've seen in this city, that actually proposed to reduce the underfunded liability. The union, as far as I've heard, has actually put forward zero information contradicting the Foster &amp; Foster report. Convinced the commission to do nothing but kick back and kick a can down the road. The underfunded liability continues to grow. It's now a little over $13 million, according to the '22 report. Not the 2021 report, but the actual 2022 report. Now, I did a PRR for that report, and you know, it took me three tries to actually get that report. One time I was told it never existed. The next time, I got the '21 report. Then I finally got the 2022 report. And since there has been zero discussion about the budget for next year, it remains to be seen if this liability is actually going to be addressed or not by this commission. Now, here's another thing that I really wonder about when it comes to this report. The pension plan is supposed to be for the benefit of the firemen when they retire. And yet, they're taken and running around in circles trying to tell you that it's not underfunded, because they know that, at the end of the day, it comes back to who? Oh, that's right, us taxpayers. Because any liability that y'all don't do something about will come back ultimately to the taxpayers. $13 million is a lot of money, people. It's time we think about putting it into the budget. Oh, that's right, we haven't even seen a budget yet, have we?
Vivian Tomaso, please.
Hi. I'm here to talk about the property that my father.
If you can just say your name and your address for the record.
Vivian Tomaso, and the property is in trust right now. My father passed away in January, and the property is under contract, and they, everything was ready to go until they did the survey, and the survey found two, the property is 2032 Golden Arm in Tree Shore and Lake Sydney, and the property has two, has easements running through the middle of the house. My father built, had the house built by Dick Proctor back in 1982. How did the Volusia County allow a house to be built on easements running through the middle of the house? Now, they can't close because they're trying to do a VA loan, and with the VA loan, the buyers, they can't close because of the easements. So I was told that we have to get letters of no objection and vacate the easement, which we already, we did, we have that. And I really don't know now, they're saying that this is not going to happen until September. We already did two extensions on the property with the buyers. The first extension, they requested that we have to pay for their rate lock, and I agreed because it's not their fault, but it's really not my fault either. But now, it's still not ready, and the rate lock is another 30 days, and we extended it for the end of July, and they asked for the money for the rate lock, and I said, "No", you know, "You asked for money for closing costs, you asked money for, for the rate lock before," or, you know, "It's not really my fault, and this is happening." So I, I just, we need this to vacate the easement. I don't, I don't know what else to do, I mean.
Ma'am, can you give us, leave us your information so somebody, so the city manager can reach out? Mr. Chisholm, can you reach out to see how we could?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Rick Carlisle's going to talk to her soon as we finish and try to get information we need.
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm already grieving my father, he passed away in January, and now we're trying to sell the property, it's in trust, and we're trying to sell the property because it's, it's not bringing in any income, it's too big. I can't live on that property, it's too big of a house. I can't clean a house 2,500 square feet. I can't do that, so we need to sell this property, and the buyers want to move in, they're renting temporarily, month to month, to be able to move into this house. They're ready to go, there, it's a VA loan, and, and everything's been done. The inspection was, was perfect, nothing was found through the inspection of the home. I mean, everything is, is perfect, everything was ready to go until the survey was done.
Okay.
I don't know what else to do.
If you can just see Mr. Rick Carlisle on the side when you're finished there, we can see how we can get some assistance for you, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Barbara Santiago.
Hello, Barbara Santiago, 1128 Lyric Drive, but I am here for the Boys and Girls Club of Deltona. I just wanted to stop by to just say thank you for the end of May. Commissioner Bradford, Vice Mayor Bradford and Commissioner Burbank came to our graduation party. Unfortunately, we had to change our date to the day before with conflicts with a different organization renting out our room, so I just wanted to say thank you very much, I totally appreciate it. The kids had a wonderful time being with everybody, and they were surprised, and it was amazing. I also, I was waiting for Chance, our area director, to get here, but I wanted just to comment about our grants that I saw, the CDBG. I just wanted to say thank you to you guys for the amount. We totally appreciate it and look forward to, as always, working with all of you. I love getting my face out in front of the community because not many people know the Boys and Girls Club.
Do you want to talk about it when we bring this up during the public comment section?
I just wanted to say thank you, but we can talk about it after, too. I was just waiting for Chance to get here, and honestly, I don't know how long the meeting's going to be because I know we're towards the end, so it's a very long workday for myself and for Chance, so. But as I was saying, I just like getting my face out in front of the community because not many people know that we do have a Boys and Girls Club here in Deltona. I am the unit director, and my kids mean the world to me, so whatever I can do and get the help and commitment and money and donations, since we are a nonprofit, is simply amazing to me, so I just want to say thank you to all you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago.
You're welcome.
David Sosa. Got a couple of concerns. I'd sent this to you, it's Purchase Order 230665-00. It's an invoice for Marsha for billing services. It says that it's one legal service, 150 hours, or 150 an hour, it's 70 hours, which came out to a total invoice of $261,000. How does that happen? I mean, if I do the math, it's only like $10,500. So how did this invoice not get flagged, and if we could kind of get an answer on that? Then I was also looking at her insurance policy. Her insurance policy, it has a date of 3/12. However, it has a retroactive that was left blank. So was she not insured for how long while she was representing the city? I've got concerns on it because she's listed as an individual, not a firm. She has multiple addresses, she has a PO box in Ovita where some information goes. She has a house, I think, in Winter Springs that she's using for her bar license. She's got another house in Claremont where a check is going. Seems kind of fishy, that's something you may want to look at. So we'll leave that there. And I was just curious, why are we still doing public comment at 6:00 PM, not televising it? We have zero meeting minutes of it, I've seen a couple request it, all they show is who spoke, not what they spoke about, there's no video of it. Where's the transparency from this government? It's gone. So I would love to see these meetings, or this, at least if you're going to keep it at 6 o'clock, videotape it and put it out there for the public to see because they can't see anything. I don't know if that's by design or not. Now, another thing, July 13th, was that a city manager's planning session or a budget Because I watched it, and it was kind of more of a budget meeting, but it was advertised as a planning session. Also, the city manager stated that there was $10 million, $10 billion, I listened to it a few times because I thought maybe I misunderstood him, set aside for Rhode Island. Where's the $10 billion coming from? Because I thought it was $10 million initially, and that money disappeared, Anita, you've made that comment multiple times, and I think Mari had said that $3 million of it went to Parks and Recs back in 2022. So where's the money coming from? Now, it was also in that meeting, it said that we'd gotten grants for a couple million dollars for sewer enhancements at the Eastern Plant, as well as the Fisher Plant. $2 million compared to, I believe the total budgeted amount was somewhere around $50 million. Where's the other $48 million coming from? Because with the adware taxes, even if you go up in taxes, it's still not going to cover that deficit. So are we taking out loans? Are we doing, you know, more bonds? Are we refinancing? Where's the money coming from? Because $2 million is a far cry from $50 million. Also, with the Fisher Plant, I was under the understanding that was going to be retrofitted for nothing but reclaimed water, and the sewage part was going to be sent to DeBarry, which we did get a check for last year for $350,000, and that was going to be handled by the county at the DeBarry Plant. Is that still happening, or are we going to spend $30 million?
Thank you, sir. Doug McDonald, please.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Doug McDonald, on Suri Runcourt in Deltona. We're glad to see you back, Ms. Commissioner Bradford. As I remember, the last meeting was June 19th, and you were not present at that time, so whatever it is, we're glad you're back. I just wanted to talk to you tonight for a minute after I give some commendations here to Mr. Albert, who spoke, three speakers before me, about a liability that the city has about the fireman's pension. I don't know anything about that, but he did speak eloquently about it, so I'm here to discuss another liability that you have to look at, some of which is not your fault, and that would be the lawsuits that are pending against the city. If any of these suits prevail, we're going to be on the hook for it, the citizens and you. The one in particular, the most recent one, involves a city commissioner you have up there right now who's being sued by a private citizen, but since he spoke apparently from the dais, or he spoke representing the city, the city has been named in this lawsuit. I don't have a grudge, I'm not mad at anybody, but this can be horrendous for all of us if the other side prevails. I have, just from my own information, I have six lawsuits here that have been filed in the last three years against the city commission, against the mayor, against the city. And of those six, three of them are still outstanding. One of them by your former city manager, another one by the deputy city manager, so, you know, this is not good, and I would like to see it stop. Certainly, you're entitled to your opinion and your views, and don't settle for anything that requires a large payment out to these people, but for example, here's one here, Brandy White, is she still here? She prevailed against the city, I believe it was only for $15,000 some time ago. That suit is gone, it has been settled, but I want to remind you that three other entertains were also sued by her, and every one of them denied her claim except this city. And you all paid, so, okay. One more thing, too. In the recent edition of The Beacon, the mayor of Orange City was quoted, I don't have a copy with me, but he was quoted as saying that he doesn't want his commission to ever speak to a citizen the way this gentleman in Deltona did. And he wants to see more civility among his commissioners and with himself. Well, guess what? He couldn't do it. They got in a big argument themselves, among the seven of them, as to the meaning of civility. So that's topic for you tonight. Thank you, sir.
Richard Belik, please.
Good evening, Mayor. I wore this hat so you don't feel like you're all alone in this building, you know, that you do have some friends. As far as these lawsuits go, where are you going to go with her, Marsha? You just want to get rid of her, you didn't get rid of her, Bradford talks you into keeping her, I mean, come on. Now, let's get the do's and don'ts when you come here. Now, when I come in this building, if, somebody left a phone here.
It's a recorder, Mr.?
If I want to ask one of these commissioners, if they were convicted of a crime, isn't that within my right?
It's not, it's not a grievance that you have. That, that's research that you do before an election or something like that.
Okay.
Grievances are things pertaining to city business.
How about the ones that don't pay taxes, or, or the ones that owe taxes? How about them? You can't ask them neither.
That's, that's not a grievance, Mr.?
No, you can't, you can't ask them about liens.
You can ask, you can email them in private and whatever you want, but when we're conducting city business, if you have a grievance, I'll listen.
I just want to get it cleared up. I just, Mr. Santiago Avia, I'm just trying to clear it up, I'm not trying to be a wise guy. I mean, you see assault charges against them. I mean, I hear from people in, in, in one district, they're, they're scared, they get their mailboxes knocked over. I mean, you know, I mean, I realize that's a big-time criminal that knocks over a mailbox, but now we got this other thing with the state attorney that nobody knows nothing about. I mean, I can understand, there's an investigation going on, you can't give the details, but you can say, yes, there is an investigation going on, and I refer all questions to the state attorney.
But that's something you can ask the state attorney. What I'm trying to avoid, Mr. Belik, is this, this city is no longer going to be a back-and-forth for whatever happens on Facebook. I'm not doing that anymore. I want us, I want us to come together as a community and as a dais, and I've already, I've already, through the city manager and other meetings, have already told the commission up here that they need to respect our residents. I am now, I, I get that, I'll give you back your 30 seconds, but I want the residents to also respect the commission. And I know it's going to take a little bit of time, but I, I'm no longer going to play this game on, oh, somebody said something on Facebook and somebody said something else. If you get out of line three times, you're going to get removed from, from, from today's meeting.
Okay.
That simple.
But isn't, isn't it hard? I mean, when you, when you find out that your leaders owe taxes, they've been convicted of crimes, I mean, it's hard to respect them. Come on, what are we, Wonder World? This ain't Wonder World, this is the real world. And then you hear about, they promise you, oh, we'll call for an audit, elect us, we'll call for an audit. Jody, Colwell, Burbank, they all promised that. They all put their hand on the Bible and said it. Now, how am I going to respect them? How could I possibly respect men that put their hands on a Bible, swear to something, promise something, and don't keep their word? How could you respect them? I can't. I know mobsters that got more class than what's here.
Mr. Belik.
I mean, this is, this is really something, I mean, I mean, now. And let's get back to the public forum that Mr. Sosa asked about. Why isn't it televised? Why don't the, isn't the residents able to see people's gripes? When's that going to change, ever? Who set this policy? Was it you? I don't think so, but I'll say that, you know, I'll use you as a scapegoat. I don't think you did that, I think you more or less pushed into it. So now, come here, and who do you respect? People with criminal records, people that don't pay their taxes?
Mr. Belik, that is not a grievance.
Thank you, Mr. Avia.
That was his second warning, Mr. Trumbetta, I'm keeping tabs. I don't need somebody in the audience doing the same, but I appreciate it.
Lindsay Briandes, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to ask to keep my name private for, well, not my name, but my address. A lot of you guys know who I am, a lot of you don't like me, some people love me, I don't care either way. I have a question. I have been, for the last several months, trying to reach out to Parks and Recreation to set up a farmer's market. trying to reach out to Parks and Recreation to set up a farmer's market in the city of Deltona. I've talked to Tom Burbank about it. He's on board with it. I've talked to Mark from Parks and Recreation. He's on board with it. Where I would like to hold it is at Duio Booster for a four to five hour window, twice a month, starting from September until May. I've been told, oh, Duio Booster is the poster child for the city, so we can't do it there. I've been told the city. I'd love to do it at the center. However, my envision that I'd like to have, I'd like to have food trucks there. I'd like to have get-togethers for the city. That's what I'd like to do. I already have 76 committed vendors who have committed to doing this. There is a group privately for them where they've agreed to come out. They've agreed to pay a fee every time we hold a farmer's market. They've agreed to help pay for permitting. They've agreed to help pay for insurance if they need it. I just need somewhere for it to go that's big enough. And I would like to hold it at Duio Booster because there's parks there for the kids to play, for the parents to let their kids play. It's big enough for the tents, for the people to set up their shops. It's big enough for the, I can't think of the word, the food trucks. It's big enough for everything that I'm looking for. And it would also generate money to the city. And it would help the elderly. It would help the disabled. It would help low income. It would help high income. It would help everybody who was looking for that for different things outside of Walmart or anything like that. What do I need to do to continue to try to bring this forward and where I would like it to go? Who do I need to speak to to get it there? Because while the center is a beautiful property and so is Veterans, the Veterans Park, it's simply not big enough for what I'd like to do.
Do you mind leaving your contact information? We're one of the clerks and I will personally get back to you to see, and I will be in contact with the city manager to see what we need to do. Maybe there's some extra information that you probably need to fill out. I know that when vendors try to do events, they do applications and things like that, so.
Okay.
I can talk to you more in depth.
Thank you. Also, my husband is 100% PNT through the VA. We are homeowners here. We are now concerned with the higher increase of taxes that are going on in the city. Our homeowner's insurance on our house is now $10,000 a month. We are in our 30s. We make $100,000 a year, which is great money, but we can't afford $10,000 a year and in homeowner's insurance taxes, let alone everything else. And now with these new taxes that are coming, that you guys are voting for, I think tonight for the trash.
So that is part of, if you want to speak on that, when we bring that up, you're more than welcome to talk on that topic.
Thank you.
Okay? So leave your information. I'll reach out to you.
All right. Thank you.
And that closes public comment because we're at 6:30. So at this time. I understand, Ms. Elbert. All right. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. If the city clerk can please call the roll.
Commissioner Villa Vasquez. President, Commissioner Burbank.